...at 6:06 PM. Um, in just a second, um, I'm gonna give the invocation. And I would just like to, I guess, to, to give just a little hit, a little prior notice of why, uh, why that I'm gonna give this, this prayer. This, this involves the, the, uh, killing of the, uh, Grisboro police officer. Sergeant Nick's, uh, friend. My wife and I. So at this time, if you please stand. Heavenly Father, we come before you with heavy hearts as we mourn the loss, Sergeant Dale Nix. We pray for their soul to rest in eternal peace and that we can find comfort in knowing they are with you. And we ask that you watch over and protect Sergeant Nix's wife Kelly and her son Will. Please give them strength, courage, wisdom, as their loss of an father is created in a midst hole in the family. In your holy name, amen. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second. All approve.
Aye.
The, uh, agenda has approved, been approved. Next is the public hearing. The cre- which is a creation of resolution levying the occupancy tax and formation of TDA. And, uh, Tori Mabe is gonna give a, uh, briefing on this. Thank you, Tori.
Yeah. Thank you, commissioners. I'm here tonight to open the public hearing portion of the required process to implement and begin levy of a room occupancy tax of up to six percent of the gross receipts derived from the rental of an accommodation within the county that is subject to sales tax imposed by the state under general statute 105 dash 164.4A3. Reminder, this is a tax that is collected from and paid by visitors to the area who are renting a local accommodation. No additional tax or fees from this collection is imposed on any of the owners of the rental properties or residents of Stokes County unless, of course, they were renting a vacation rental in Stokes County. This public hearing is a step in the process to receive input from vacation rental owners and the public about collection of occupancy tax and formation of a countywide tourism development authority. As you know, last Thursday at the Arts Place, we hosted two public workshops with a very informative presentation from Chris Kavanoff with Magellan Strategies Group. The public and rental owners were all invited to attend, and both sessions were well attended with very positive input and feedback from the public who attended. This will help as we work on the formation of a resolution to be presented at the January 22nd 2:00 PM Commissioner meeting. Our goal is to start the collection of occupancy tax on April the 1st, the start of the second quarter of 2024. And we can now open the floor for any public comments or anyone who signed in. I'm not sure if anyone did.
There's no, there's nobody on the, uh, on the sheet, but is anybody sitting in here that did not sign up that would like to make a public comment?
A public hearing.
In the public hearing? No, I don't see anybody. So, um, just for verification purposes, we opened the public hearing, uh, at 6:09 and, um, it's now 6:11 will close, uh, since there's no one to make comments reference the, uh, the public hearing. So therefore, we'll now go to public comments. And 6:11 PM. Just real briefly, we give four minutes. If you're here with a group and you want to give up your time, that's fine too. Just let us know in advance. Uh, Amber, their county manager, will run the, uh, the timer. If, if you, in the middle of a comment, your four minutes comes up, I'll give you a lease enough to finish what you were trying, trying to do. So the first person up is Jane Bennett.
I am here to comment on the disrespect of some members of this board towards citizens of Stokes County in the last two meetings. I believe some members owe public apologies for their behavior. My first apology request is from Comish- for Commissioner Chandler and refers to a statement in the December 28th meeting at the one hour and 23 minute mark of the meeting, he says, as he points to the mayor of King, and I quote, "There are services that we provide for your police department and for your city, and we don't charge you a penny, and that's our 911 center." Also, in quote. Also, at the three hour and 21 minute mark, while ta- talking about the animal control center, you state, and quote, and I quote, "And by the way, animal control serves King too. As far as I know, I don't think King has their own animal control because I know that we respond to King calls and they bring their animals to our animal shelter." End quote. There are just too many pronouns such as we, they, our, their, and your in these comments. Your disdain for the city of King is hurt in your tone of voice, your actions, and your words, and you owe the city of King and all of its residents an apology. King is a part of Stokes County. It has been long before you moved here, and it will be long after you have served your three years on this board. I would like to thank Commissioner, Ms. Cox, excuse me, Commissioner Cox for pointing out at the three hour and 34 minute mark of the meeting that the residents of King pay Stokes County taxes too, helping to cover the expenses of the 911 dispatch center and the animal control center. I've spoken to Richard Brand to get a down, a breakdown of tax revenue coming from different districts of the county. He doesn't have that capability right now, but says they are working on a report that we give this information. I believe it would be to your benefit to see the income Stokes County gets from the cities of King, citizens of King. My sec- my second apology request is also for the comments, for comments made by Commissioner Chandler at the one hour and 10 minute mark of the meeting. Commissioner Chandler speaks offensively about the people of Stokes County. He speaks in a surprising tone, expressing the fact that we sometimes make sense saying, and I quote, "People are great, even the ones that don't have a lot. They don't look down on nobody. They actually, honestly, when you listen to them, a lot of them make sense. They are real common sense people." I cannot even quote the words with the same disrespect in my voice as you had on December 28th. I'm not sure what you expected when you moved here, but the citizens of Stokes County are not ignorant. Rather, they are the ones that don't have a lot or not. The tone in that comment was very offensive, and you should issue a public apology to all the residents of Stokes County. My third apology request is also for Commissioner Chandler, which seems to be a pattern. To Dr. Rice and the Stokes County Board of Education. At the three hour and 32 minute mark of the meeting, when a citizen asked why the county commissioners would be on the hook for the $2.1 million grant match, you stated, and I quote again, "There is no guarantee that when we signed the document that said we guarantee we would come up with the $2.1 million if they approved the grant, we have no guarantee that Dr. Rice will fulfill his agreement to fund $700,000 a year for the next three years out of the budget." For the chairman of the county commissioners to accuse the superintendent and inferring the entire Board of Education of flat out lying and not honoring a decision that was discussed and voted on is beyond comprehension. I don't know where you came from, but hopefully this is not how Stokes County does business. Actually, the disrespect coming from Commissioner Chandler, Commissioner Morse, and Commissioner Wood in the last three meetings toward the Board of Education is unacceptable, and all three commissioners should be apologizing to Dr. Rice and the entire Board of Education. In closing, I would like to point out two things. The first is to the citizens of Stokes County. The city of King and its residents are not your enemy. We do happen to be the largest community in the county, but we in no way want to take anything away from the rest of the county. We enjoy participating activities and events all over this beautiful county. I for one support every single school and student in Stokes County. Please do not let the divisiveness of this board of county commissioners divide us citizens. The second is to the board of the county commissioners.
That's enough, ma'am.
I would like to suggest to you that you put a time limit on your comment during the commissioner manager's comment part of the meeting. The way you do my citizens' comments, what you're doing right now.
That's enough, ma'am.
Some of you can be too long running during this time and have the rest of the meeting discuss the issues that are at hand.
Please sit down.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and you're very disrespectful.
Thank you. Alicia McHugh?
We're gonna be combining minutes, me and my daughter.
Thank you.
Thank commissioners, I just want you to know, I'm very nervous being up here. I'm not a public speaker, so I do appreciate you being here and working through this with me. Uh, my name is Alicia McHugh, and I'm here to share a traumatic experience that my family and I have faced on the night of November 3rd. It is an incident that not only deeply impacted us, but also raises concern about the safety and security of our community. On that night, my two children went out to our field like they always do. They put our chickens in, collect eggs, and they put the sheep to bed. They put them securely in their shelter. On that night, the sheep did not come down. My children, one of them was gonna run in there, go find out what was going on. The other one said, no, let's go get our parents. So they ran inside, um, I went outside, uh, my husband went outside, and my son went outside. We went up to the sheep field. Um, I saw two sheep pretty much immediately. One had its face mauled, and it was still alive. The other one was pretty much just dead laying there, and its neck was ripped. We shortly realized that we were inside of our own fence with two dogs. These dogs not only killed our animals, but they terrorized us while we were in there as well. We were very fearful of our lives. And shortly after, we were able to get ahold of, um, Mr. Teague. Actually, sorry, before that, we found out that two of our other sheep were dead as well. So it wasn't just one, wasn't just two, it was all four of our sheep. I'm very positive that if there were more sheep, they would have been gone as well. I'm, I'm not taking this lightly, and I hope that you aren't either. Um, upon Officer Teague, um, the phone call, we let him know what was going on. We saw the dogs run out the gates that unfortunately we left open that evening when we entered. So as the dogs went out, they went out towards the left. So me and my husband went in our vehicle, searching the neighborhood. It didn't take too long. Um, we went down about two roads. We did actually see some other dogs that were off leashes as well. They were actually smaller, and they were not the dogs that fit the description. We later found the two dogs, and we tried to get ahold of Adam Teague again on the phone, since we knew he was coming down to the area, but he did not answer, which is reasonable, um, because he's driving. We found him on Hub Justice Road, which is right near us, and we flagged him down. We brought him directly to the house where the dogs were at. He asked us if these were the dogs. My husband said, I cannot identify them. I said, I swear on my soul, it is those dogs. Adam Teague then went up to their door. Um, he was waiting for the owners to come back, because it was two younger women who owned the two dogs. So one lady owns one dog, the other owns another. Um, upon his discovery, he found out that the dogs did have blood on them. One dog, uh, obviously fit the description because it had its chain hanging down that it gnawed off, which also leads me into, um, how, how dogs in Stokes County should not be allowed to be tied up, because this is what ends up happening, is they get loose. Um, Adam T came back to our home and he quote, and it says, uh, we even have him on surveillance cameras saying, "It did end up being those dogs, it was them." And I will be glad to send you guys any type of email, because right now it's just on my phone, and I'm not sure how it would come off of here. But we have him on surveillance, admitting that it is those dogs. Um, all he gave them that night was a nuisance. I'm not quite sure why it only became a nuisance and not a dangerous dog. I have children that weigh less than these dogs. Sorry. So it's, um, we got the runaround. He told us, go down Monday to go get the report, and it would be done. I went down first thing Monday morning, I called them before going down there for his report, and I drove all the way out there to Germantown. He says, I have to subpoena this report. So I wasted a whole trip from our home to there to go get a subpoena, or to go pick up a report that was supposedly done, but I had to subpoena. So at that point, I had to go down to the magistrate. I also, while I went to the magistrate, I stopped at the sheriff's office, who then told me to go speak to Amber Brown, who was the county manager, who oversees animal control. And after speaking with her, she seemed very receptive, um, in person. And then it went on for about a week with no phone call back. That's when I reached out to Mr. Brad Chandler, and he was very attentive. He listened to what I had to say, and he was able to get ahold of Amber, who finally then returned my phone call. And unfortunately, it led to not much of anything. Um, it's concerning that she seems to lack full understanding of animal control's responsibilities. How can you be a manager of someone if you don't even know their responsibilities? How do you reprimand them? So that's where I'm at with that. I know I'm starting to run out of time, but we want to officially state that the dogs owned by Jocelyn Purtle and Ashlyn Nelson are dangerous. And if any negligence occurs upon the return, we hold Stokes County responsible. We urge that these dogs be labeled as dangerous per the Stokes County Animal Control ordinances. Our sense of safety in our backyard is compromised. And we request that you ensure the proper and ongoing training for animal control agents. Sorry. But I did give you guys pictures, if you guys don't mind looking them real quick. Unfortunately, I did highlight, um, what a dangerous dog is, um, per your guys' own, uh, words there. You guys can see on the first picture, it's a picture of my daughter Eva, which is right next to me. That's her at three years old. She grew up with two of the sheep for the past seven years that died just because these dogs decided to go have a little fun. If you keep going, you'll be able to see one of our sheep, Elsa, who's missing half of her face. Emmy is the last picture, and she was also the very first picture. So you can obviously see a major difference between the last seven years. These animals were well taken care of. They are wool sheep, they're not meat sheep. So they are pets. They're not just sheep that are gonna be slaughtered in a week or a month anyway. We've had the two for seven years, and the other two that died that day were born and raised on our farm. Like I said, we're not taking this lightly, and I'm not sure why more action was not taken that evening. It's, it's very heart wrenching. We fear for the safety. And like I said, I mean, it's, it's unfair. It's unfair what these dogs did. It's unfair that we were left to have to bury these do- uh, bury our own sheep. That was very taxing, not only emotionally, but physically, by hand. How do you, I mean, they're like a hundred some pounds. We had to do that. These dog owners did not. I'm starting, starting to run into her time, so I'm just gonna allow her to speak.
Hello, commissioners, my name is, oh, Eva McHugh, and I am here tonight to ask you to take this situation seriously. I should be able to play in my own backyard and not fear these dogs returning. I do not want to end up like my sheep. If you can help in any way, please do. Thank you for your time.
Sorry, I guess I'm a little bit nervous. But I do appreciate Brad Chandler. I know you got a little bit flack from him last week, but you did end up helping us in this situation, and it did mean a lot.
Appreciate it. Appreciate it. Joseph McHugh?
Hello, Joseph McHugh. That was my wife, uh, who just spoke there. I actually didn't want to come up here to, uh, speak because, um, I don't have much faith in the government. My past experiences that at best, the government is incompetent. Uh, but I came up here because my wife asked me to, and because it is important. Um, and incompetence is what we experienced, uh, with animal control, uh, that Friday when our sheep were killed. Adam T came out, we pointed out to where the animals were to him, we felt, we did his job, we found the animals that killed our sheep. Um, he came back, and like my wife had said, um, I didn't act, she was actually there, I saw it on camera later. He told us that it was those dogs that killed the animals. And he said that all that he could do was give them a $100 nuisance fine. I mean, in my opinion, nuisance fines are for dogs that are barking, or maybe a dog comes over to your house and tears up your garden or something like that. You know, killing livestock or domestic animals is beyond a nuisance. We quickly, we quickly found that out that weekend. We did a little bit of, uh, research. There's about 12 pages of North Carolina statutes and Stokes County statutes that were pretty, I mean, if you have a high school diploma, you could read and understand them. And it was, it's clear that he could do a lot more. When he came out there, he said that that was all he could do. He actually told us, and I don't know if this is true or not, he said that he didn't even have to come out for the call. Um, he told us, uh, that he didn't even want to do his job, that he was recently gonna be stepping down. He told us that they, he didn't have the right to go on the dog owner's property, that, for the dogs that kill our animals. Um, he also left the dog, the dogs there covered in blood and just roaming around their property. I mean, isn't it the point of animal control to detain dangerous dogs? Uh, so that, that's some of the incompetence that we dealt with, with just animal control. My wife had mentioned some, you know, with other county officials. Um, the biggest issue for me is that these dogs generally come back, they know that we have animals. And like my wife said, we have four, four children that live with us. Um, you know, the youngest ones are six and 11 years old, and they lay, they weigh less than the sheep. They play in our front yard, our backyard, they also holt or train the sheep. And really, they're, they're in danger now. We have to go outside with them because we don't know where these dogs are. They weren't even being properly kept in a kennel or inside after the incident happened until we had to call Adam Teague. Basically, these dogs at a minimum need to be deemed dangerous. Um, and they need to be kept properly so they don't escape again. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Lisa Ferguson?
Good evening, my name is Kathleen Edwards. My address is 1726 Rogers Road in Mount Erie, that's in Stokes County. And I'm coming to speak with you tonight because I'm extremely concerned about the current state of our animal services department. It's currently called animal control, but I'd like to have everyone, uh, think about changing the name to animal welfare. I'm concerned about the current state of our animal services department and about a series of extremely bad decisions that affect the well-being of animals in their care. In, excuse me, in July of last year, the interim county manager fired Chief Officer Shore, a chief officer who actually knew and enforced the laws, who truly cared about animals, and who worked very hard, very long hours to do a good job. Letting her go was a terrible decision. In August of last year, the county veterinarian, Dr. McLeod, discovered that a kennel attendant at the shelter was administering antibiotics and sedatives in lieu of providing adequate veterinary care to animals at the shelter as required by law. Furthermore, she was doing that without the oversight of a licensed vet. Due to Dr. McLeod's findings, Dr. McLeod resigned as county vet. In September of last year, following an inspection, the United States Department of Agriculture fined Stokes County for 13 separate violations at the shelter, many involving the same kennel attendant. On September 28th of 2023, two of the employees responsible for the violations were promoted and given raises. Those promotions amplified ongoing concerns about the care of animals at our county shelter and the care of animals in our county. At our December 28th meeting, a week ago, the interim county manager announced the hiring of Tommy Reeves to the position of director. Mr. Reeves lacks adequate animal welfare enforcement experience and has publicly spoken out against improving legal protections for animals in this county. Mr. Reeves has publicly expressed opposition to existing local laws. Mr. Reeves has failed to enforce local laws crucial for survival. The prohibition against fixed point tethering, the temperature minimum, the bedding requirement, and the waste removal requirement. In 2018, a group of concerned residents initiated the lengthy process of establishing changes to the county ordinance that would mandate minimum standards of care for tethered animals in Stokes County. Additionally, we advocated for the implementation of a restriction on tying dogs up outdoors for their entire lives. The county commissioners failed to pass the proposed restriction on perpetual tethering. However, they voted in the following common sense provisions to the county ordinance in April of 2021. And I'm reading from Article 5, paragraph C. "No person shall tether or restrain an animal outdoors by any means during extreme weather, at or below freezing temperature, or during periods of driving rain, tornado, hurricane, or periods when a severe weather warning has been issued." D, "No, no person shall tether outdoors a puppy under the age of six months." E, "Under no circumstances may the tethering device itself be placed around the animal's neck." In sub-paragraph H, minimum enclosure sizes were added because there were actually people at two different trailer parks maintaining dogs outdoors day and night in wire cages without a tarp, without getting them out, making them live in their feces. So we established minimum enclosure sizes so that could never happen again. The definition of adequate shelter was improved to include the provision of a sufficient quantity of bedding to provide protection against cold and promote retention of body heat. A definition was added to define acceptable restraint as a running line or trolley system. These minimum standards of care apply to all dogs who are forced to live outdoors year round without relief. There are reasonable exceptions for hunting, camping, state licensed field trials, dog shows, herding, agriculture, and law enforcement. Before these minimum standards of care were passed, many dogs in our county were routinely deprived of basic necessities and were forced to endure extreme weather conditions, sometimes resulting in their death. I spoke with Director Reeves last week about a dog chained to a tree when the temperature was going to drop well below freezing. The dog's chain was wound around a large oak, making the dog unable to reach his overturned plastic house, which had a gaping hole in it. Mr. Reeves incorrectly stated that there is no temperature limit in our ordinance. I explained to him that there were at that location other violations plainly visible from the road. No food bowl, no water bowl, no bedding. For a short haired dog outdoors in winter, bedding is a fundamental requirement for survival. Our ordinance prohibits fixed point chaining. And the dog was chained to a fixed point, a tree. I advised Mr. Reeves that if the dog remained unlawfully tethered when the temperature dropped below freezing, the situation would warrant dispatch of the officer on call to prevent the dog from suffering frostbite or hypothermia. He replied that no one from his department was going to go out. I found out a few hours later from a deputy in Stokes that Mr. Reeves had contacted 911 communications, and without any authority to do so, had instructed them not to take any more reports about the ordinance violations at that address. Due to the continued failure of the county commissioners to pass a tethering ban, many dogs will continue to be tethered outdoors for their entire lives. Therefore, we must, as a compassionate community, vigorously protect the minimum standards of care that we have in the ordinance. We have to have an animal services director, manager Brown, we have to have an animal services director who is capable of enforcing both services director who is capable of enforcing both the state statutes against cruelty and the local ordinances that are on the books. Mr. Reeves demonstrated an inability to carry out his job duties when he failed to render help to a dog who was neglected and suffering. Mr. Reeves is not interested in enforcing the laws we have because, as he told me on the phone last week, he does not agree with them. Our laws are not tailored to suit a small handful of hobbyists whose standards differ drastically from those of the general public. Our laws are not tailored to suit a small handful of hobbyists whose standards differ drastically from those of the general public. Our laws reflect our values. We cannot allow one person with a narrow personal agenda to swoop in and unilaterally abolish animal welfare laws that took decades to pass. I just have three more lines.
Go ahead.
Everyone in this county needs to remain vigilant and take a long, hard look at what must be driving the recent string of bad decisions. It is abundantly clear to anyone who is paying attention that these decisions are not being driven by the pursuit of excellence in animal welfare. And I know that last time I spoke, Commissioner Morris had a question about how cold is too cold for a dog. He always likes to have the science behind the answer. And so this is from Tufts University. Tufts is a prestigious research institute right outside Boston, Massachusetts. I've printed out the chart that is used for animal welfare. It's, it's used across the United States.
You're gonna have to wrap it up.
Okay, well, this chart, I gave a copy to Amber for Commissioner Morris.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your attention.
Next up is Tanya Hart. Okay, all right. All right, this time we'll close the public comment section. And we will go to comments for the managers and commissioners. And we'll start with Ms. Cox. Would you like to go first?
Sure. Thank you all for being here and for the public input, public comments that were given. I too would like to express my condolences for Sergeant Nix's family and his law enforcement family in Greensboro, that tragedy. They've been in my thoughts and prayers since that incident happened. And it's with a son in law enforcement, it's, it hits different as it does to you as well when you know you've got loved ones in that line of work every day. And, and to all of our first responders, good, just thanking them for, for the work they do, for sure. And that's all I have right now.
Thanks everybody for coming. I do appreciate everybody speaking up. I know we sat here and you don't think we're listening, but we are. To the young lady and the family who lost, I was raised on a farm and blew something like that. I've seen it happen. It's, it's not a good sight when you invest your time and money. And I've got a quote, and I kid you not, I did not, I wrote this down before, this morning. I love reading quotes. And my quote for the day is, y'all want to think I made this up, but I didn't. Eleanor Roosevelt, "Do what you feel in your heart to be right, or you'll be criticized That's all I got.
Mr. Morris?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to welcome everybody. It's good to have you out. I appreciate all the speakers tonight. The, I feel really bad about what happened to you folks' sheep and everything. My neighbor actually had something similar happen, I guess it's been four or five years ago, with just a pack of wild dogs that came through. They weren't right from the neighborhood, I don't guess, they were just kind of passing through or whatever. But we take, take these comments seriously on, on things like this and I can assure you, we will make every effort to, to prevent this type of activities from happening in the future. And we'll, we'll reexamine what we're doing and make sure people are held accountable whenever they, whenever they don't control their animals as, as they are required to do. One other comment I have, you know, the, we had another speaker tonight who came up and said a lot of stuff I disagree with. Brad and I both are big fans of City of King. We love the place, spend a lot of time over there, spend a lot of money over there. It doesn't do a whole lot for your argument, it really kind of, to me, you know, if, if the argument has merits, you don't need to deliberately violate our rules like the chairman of the school board did last week. And here we have somebody else up doing the same thing this week. So, you know, I listen intently to what you say, but it really diminishes your argument and, and I really challenge the merits of it when you decide you have to behave like that.
Two different ways. I know, not each time.
Man, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna evict you from the, from the proceedings. One more word and you'll be evicted.
Like I said, you know, there, when you have no merits to your argument, then you, you rely on antics like we saw tonight. And it's not, I'm not impressed, just to make that clear. Like I said, thanks, Sergeant Nix, you know, I have a, I have a guy I went to school with starting in the first grade and his daughter is a Greensboro police officer. And she serves on, on the honor guard, or she did serve on the honor guard with Sergeant Nix down in Greensboro. So I'm sure you can feel all of our pain associated with that. I've been talking to that family this week and they're all having a really tough week as well. So it's, it's, it's a tough thing and it's a shame we can't prevent that sort of thing from happening. But like Brad said, you know, I hope the good Lord's with them and, and gives them peace and comfort as, as they try to deal with moving forward. And I think that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. First of all, as always, I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. I feel like the citizens of Stokes County getting involved in our governmental process, and I say this at every meeting, is so important to me. And anyone that's watching on our live stream, thank you for being a part of our process I would just want to say that I hear, I can go back to my wife tonight at my house and I can almost say word for word what our public comments were. She usually watches the meeting on live stream if she's feeling okay. My wife has a lot of health issues, but if she's able, she watches. And I just want to say, public comments is a vital part of our meeting. And I feel like if a person from Stokes County has something important enough that they feel like they need to convey, they have the right to do that within their four-minute I just want to thank all our first responders also, our law enforcement, our EMS, our 911, all of those people, because this tragedy that happened with Sergeant Nix, I think, comes back to us and, and it shows us how our people in Stokes County put their lives on the line every day. And we never know what could happen. And, you know, I thank the EMS and the law enforcement many times. I've had my house broken into, they jumped right on it. I've had two heart attacks. EMS has been right on target with my two heart attacks to get me to the hospital. And, but to the Nix family, my condolences to them. And, but I just want to make sure all our first responders, the law enforcement, 911, I know how much I appreciate their action. And I'm going to close it with something that I'm very thankful for. Saturday, a couple of things occurred in the county and my wife got a couple of calls on some things. I wasn't at home, but it was a good thing that I wasn't at home because I was at my mom's house Saturday. It was her birthday and she turned 91 years old. And I'm going to tell you something, she used to tell me all the time she would pass before my dad, and that never occurred. My dad's been dead 10 years now. But when I went up to see my mom, I gave her a card. She hammered me down before I went out. She knew I was going to buy her something for her birthday. She told me five times, you better not bring nothing in this house for my birthday. But I did it anyway because I tell you, my mom, I know everyone in here probably, if your mother's still living, you need to be thankful for that. And I just think my mom's the greatest mother in the world and for her to celebrate her 91st birthday, in my heart, I know that she might not get to celebrate another one. That might be her last one. I don't know if she'll make it to 92, but I'm going to do something I don't usually do. Hey, Mom, I love you. And I know my wife is watching probably and I hope she'll call you tonight and tell you I said that. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'll be brief in my wrap-up. I would like to just, just to say a few more words about Sergeant Nix. He really loves Stokes County. He grew up in Greensboro, in the Greensboro area, but his grandparents had property near Hanging Rock State Park. They had a cabin. He spent many summers up there with his grandparents in, in Stokes County. He enjoyed coming out to Trace, my wife Tracy and I's place to, to shoot and to, to be in the country with the horses and the animals and everything. In fact, so much that he started to look, he started to look for, look for property in Stokes County. Ma'am, can you please leave?
Um, you're a backup, sorry. I didn't mean to put that down.
Anyway, before he was, before he was killed, he was looking to buy property in the northern, northwest part of Stokes County, especially with his son Will, as Will is 16. It's just, it just with a, it just smacks hard that somebody that's a good person, and you can just look at a lot of the tributes, even the people that, that, as they're labeled themselves, a panhandler. Sergeant Nix treated him so well and gave him so much money that he come in and donated to Sergeant Nix's family a lot more money probably than what Sergeant Nix gave him. But it was the way that Sergeant Nix recognized people and treated people. So with that, with that being said, I, and I appreciate all the, all the commissioners' comments about that. And I know Commissioner Cox has a son, and I got a wife and a son, and of course, just lost a good friend. And with that being said, everybody in public safety, thank God that, that we have, we have good people, reliable people here in Stokes County. And, and I, it just, it just brings everything home when, when tragedy like this, this happens. Second, second thing I'd like to say is, look, I appreciate everybody's comments and that that's what makes America great, is you can come up and you can say whatever you want to say, you can have your opinion. And, and ma'am, whatever your name was, from King, you don't faze me one bit, but thank you for coming here to Danbury and, and giving the comments. But I will say this, so we got a few people in the King area that they want to drive this county apart for whatever the reason is over money. That, that, that can't happen. Retired cop, do you understand the fallacy of that? Is if, if we kept our patrol cars in Fayetteville, in the areas that produced all the taxes supposedly, and not sent patrol cars into the areas in the, in the poverty areas that either lived in, that didn't own houses, that just rent a property, do you, does that make sense to anybody that we're just going to give protection to somebody or that we're going to, just because someone pays more revenue that we're not going to, we're not going to provide services to other people that live in the county? I don't think so either. So with that, I'll say thank you for everybody for coming and we're going to move on to the next item. Oh, I'm sorry, we have our county manager.
I'll be brief. No, that's okay. I'll be brief. Thank you all for coming. I appreciate both of, everybody sharing their concerns, especially both about animal control. Ms. Edwards, I did want to say one thing about what you said, if you don't mind. I'm aware of the situation and have checked into the complaint. We are still looking into it, but I will say that some of the concerns that you talked about were addressed and actions were taken. Mr. Reeves actually spoke to the owner of that property and the dog's not tied to a tree anymore.
The dog's gone. The dog is gone.
Okay, well, this is the-
I don't know that it didn't freeze to death and you can't get a straight answer out of him.
I'm sorry, I'm just going to, I'm not sure what's happened since earlier today, so.
Okay, I think you only got a portion of the story, but the dog's not there.
I was just going to try to address some of your concerns that I did know about.
Ms. Edwards, you can talk after the meeting if you want, but we got them.
And there was proper food and water when he, he did walk back there and confirm that there was food and water and there was two dog houses. One did have a hole in the bottom, but one, one did not, the other one, there was a second one, with proper blankets and shavings. But I will follow up to check on the situation at present. And Mr. Reeves, I have faith we'll do a good job. We may all have different viewpoints, but I do think that we can work together for the betterment to resolve issues and strengthen, strengthen our county and our ordinance. I think that we do have different viewpoints, a lot of us, but we can work together to do that. He just started around Christmas, so.
I know, Amber, but he doesn't believe in attendance.
Ms. Edwards, you can't, one more time and you're going to have, you're going to have to go. It's got to be done afterwards.
Okay, I just can't take this one-sided conversation. It's so wrong. It's so wrong.
It's not fair. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Amber. Okay, this time I'm going to read the conflict of interest statement of all the board members before moving further. Does any board member have a conflict with any of the items on the agenda for tonight or one that may be perceived as a conflict of interest? All right, seeing no one has a conflict. So can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion, we approve consent.
Okay. So is it approved? All right. All right, carries it. Now we're going to go to the information agenda. So first up is tax office agenda. Tax administrator Richard Bram will present. Moving up, Richard.
Good evening. I'm here this evening to provide information to the board concerning 2023 property values across the county. I provided information on all 10 tax districts that make up the county. Each chart will break down the valuation for the tax district into four categories: real property, personal property, motor vehicles, and public utilities, along with the percentage allocation for each category within the specific tax district. I've also provided definitions for each category. Real property, also known as real estate, includes land, buildings, structures, and improvements on land. Personal property can be broken down into two categories: business and individual. Business personal property is associated with a business. It includes machinery and equipment, furniture and fixtures, computer equipment supplies. Individual property, manufactured homes, it's not considered as personal property, airplanes, boats, jet skis, perm-tagged trailers, all untagged motor vehicles that would normally require a license tag. Airplanes, boats, jet skis, perm-tagged trailers, all untagged motor vehicles that would normally require a license tag. Motor vehicles includes registered vehicles with the North Carolina Department of Motor Vehicles. Registered motor vehicles are processed, bills are processed by the state of North Carolina as part of the tax and tag renewal program. And then the last category is public utilities, also known as public service companies. Includes your communication, gas, pipeline, power, railroad, airbus, motor freight, wireless tower companies. The North Carolina Department of Revenue values those properties and they are not valued by our county appraisers. The next chart provides a breakdown of the number of each of the property types, real, personal, motor vehicle, and public utilities for each tax district. And the final chart shows the tax rate for each tax district. I would like to say that the tax office is always looking for ways to improve providing information. However, currently sometimes certain requests are not possible to fulfill due to software limitations and how the data is compiled. That does not mean that we are not documenting the requests and looking into ways to complete the request. Our office over the last year has worked with NC DOR to be able to track motor vehicles differently. This took a lot, a considerable amount of time by tax office staff as well as DOR staff. We hope to be able to provide additional ways to track personal property valuations in 2024. This will also create additional work for our staff, but it's something we're willing to do in an effort to be as efficient and accommodative as possible. Public utility valuations, basically they are what they are. They can only be tracked by the tax districts. This is per a conversation I had with NC DOR. This is not due to NC DOR's lack of trying to help us. This is due with how the public service companies report their valuations. And real property valuations, we are able to track, to be tracked in different ways due to our GIS mapping software, interacting with our CAMAS system, parsing that file. And that's all I have in regards to that. And I also have, if I can bring this up, because I just got this today from Joanne. It's.
Much better.
That's all I have unless the board has any questions.
Just good job, good report. Thank you, Richard. That's all I have.
Mr. Morse?
Good report, Richard. I have no questions.
Thanks, Richard. I appreciate all your view and your input.
Any questions? Good report. Thank you for your work on it.
Thank you. Next is the call and health statistics for 2023.
So good evening. What you have in front of you is several different reports that, that I ran for county year 2023 as far as the 911 Communication Center goes. Like I said, there's a lot of, there's a lot of data in here that, that we're not gonna read line by line. But we'll kind of just hit some highlights. The first, the first page you see there says call center statistics. Seventy-nine thousand, six hundred and twenty-four total phone calls we took in the 911 center. Page two breaks it down to 911-only calls. And then page, the third page there is the non-emergency lines broken down. Next page, or the next set of pages are total cat events that we entered for 2023, sixty-four thousand, nine hundred and sixty. I think one of our most recent meetings were back in the fall when I was presenting some stuff. You kind of saw the same data or how it's broken down by call nature. You know, you can kind of look at that later and see how many, you know, wrecks or alarms or whatever we had. The next several reports are kind of broken out by department. The first one is the sheriff's office, followed by King Police, Stokes County EMS. And then instead of, instead of providing you with a stack of papers like this, the next to the last page is, I just kind of done a graph for you for the fire and rescue departments. Instead of just handing you a stack of, of things from King and each department. And then the last one, I broke down call totals by zip code or city or township. As you see across the bottom there, Lawsonville, Westfield, King, German Ten, Pine Hall, Pinnacle, and so on. The totals are there across the top. Like I said, everything is pretty broken down, easy to read and understand. If you want to, like I said, sorry I didn't get this to you sooner so that you could digest it before tonight's meeting, but I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Mr. Cox, do you have?
Not just, not just in just now seeing it, I don't have. I mean, I might have some, but I can come out if I need, I guess. I mean, it's pretty self-explanatory.
I got a curiosity question. And we've all done it. When we hit 911 by mistake, should we hang up or just say it's a mistake on our part? What should we do?
You should stay, yeah. Stay on the line, talk to the operator and let them know that it's an accident. The, the sheriff's office has a policy that they're still gonna respond. Sometimes they may, they may, the deputy may actually call you. But they, they still come out just to make sure that it really was an accident. But yes, stay on the line. We're gonna call you back regardless if you hang up, so. Good job.
I don't have any questions. I'm gonna go through all this and I may have some later on. If I do, I'll shoot them to Amber and get back to you.
Sure.
Ready, good. That's a good job. You did a lot of good information here.
Mr. Middelhoff?
You answered my question, so if you get a call and they hang up, you call them back.
Correct. Yes.
And I just want to say, Matt, this is a very, I call it meticulous report. Very, I'll tell you, it got it broken down into so many different categories. I know that took some time. Just want to thank you for that. I'll take it home. I'll recover it. If I have any questions, I'll give you a call.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Matt, good, good report. And you know, this is kind of like the start to lay the foundation of down the road. We can compare, you know, the, the level of calls that are coming in, the type of calls that are coming in. And I think, and we'll talk a little bit about it too later on under strategic planning. But as we, as the county continues to grow, then we'll also be able to compare and see, you know, what type of call volume is, is affecting the growth? Is it, is it a violent crime problem? Is it, is it more ambulances? Is this more, you know, fires, whatever? But we'll be able to hopefully plan a little bit better as, as we, as we move on.
Right. And, and like we were talking earlier, I mean, this is gonna be a lot of the same data you'll see in quarterly reports when we start presenting in April with, and then of course by the year end, you'll have a kind of a compiled data from, for the entire year. But expect to see more stuff like this every quarter.
Thank you. And tell your folks that do a good job. I had to call on that animal complaint, but Ms. Edwards, I, I, after she went in depth and everything, so I did call to make sure that someone had called.
Right.
Not to take a chance, but they all did a good job. I appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you.
Do we have someone else for the, like for the talk about the suicides and?
I figured if it was a topic of interest, we could schedule them for a future meeting. Just because those kind of, those stats were kind of last minute, so.
So yeah, in, in the future, we'll see like overdoses and suicides, so we can kind of.
I attached on the agenda, there's just no one here to speak about them. But we can schedule that for the future if you want to. I can see something I can come up with.
That sounds good. Next we have the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Strategic Member Services introduction. That's Joanna Sharp is.
Joanna Sharp.
John.
So, and thank you commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. I, I must apologize that my partner was unavoidably had to go to another county tonight to help them hire a county manager. So Amy Cannon is who I work very closely with. Oops, let's see, which button, Amber? Let me turn it on. There we go. Amy Cannon is who I work extremely closely with. Amy is retired county manager from Cumberland County. And she is part of the association's outreach member services. And I am a county operations consultant with the association. And I'll tell you a little bit more about what I do, but I've got over thirty years of experience in local government. And if Amy were here, she loves to say that the two of us together bring you sixty years of experience. But I also just want to take a personal moment of privilege to say it's really a pleasure to be here in Stokes County tonight. My father was born and raised in Stokes County. And I have lots of fond memories spending my Sunday afternoons at my grandmother's house and at my Uncle Betty Ruth and Codell's store over in Francisco. So Stokes has a very special place in my heart, so it's nice to be here tonight. But I bring you greetings from the association and want to share with you a little bit about some new services that the association implemented. It's been just a little over a year ago. And those are referred to as strategic member services. And the association wanted to look at how they could build capacity in helping counties. They created outreach services has been in place for several years. And those were made up of retired county managers who can provide a resource to county managers and other people. As just kind of another set of eyes, another set of ears. And last year they expanded that. They'd only had one person for a while and they expanded that to four. And Amy is actually the outreach association who's responsible for Stokes County. Some of the things that the outreach facility team or the outreach team does is they will, can facilitate retreats. They can help with strategic planning. They can provide just day-to-day question and answer. But they can also assist with county manager recruitments. We've just finished assisting Caswell County with their county manager recruitment. And we're also in the process of assisting with the Precyce County Manager Recruitment. And so those are the services that that centers around the outreach services. I'm part of the direct consulting team who goes out and assists counties with whatever they may need assistance with, especially in the areas of finance. I have a lot of depth and experience in that area. And I most recently have been working with a lot of the counties that are on the unit assistance list, helping them get current on overdue audits. But I've, I've expanded into really helping in whatever area county might need if they need some additional technical expertise. Everything from finance to HR to general operations. We also, with all the new money that's come down in the last couple of years for ARPA dollars and opioid settlement, there are two specific divisions that have been created in the association to provide technical assistance to all the counties in those areas. And then of course, there's the education and training, which you are probably most familiar with, with our annual conferences, special trainings for new board members, training for board chairs. There's also the steering committees that commissioners have an opportunity to participate on. And then the newest part of this program is the strategic project coordinators who are recent MPA graduates, who we are actually placing in counties to provide additional staff capacity in order to help counties, but also in turn to help try and keep people interested in growing the profession. Because one of the biggest challenges we see across the state right now is attracting and retaining talent and getting people who want to come and do this very important work. We've done a little bit of work with your team to date. Amy and I, she initially reached out because of concerns over your late audit last year and also knew you were in manager transition. So we've had the opportunity to meet with Amber, the HR team, and the finance team back in October. And we've had opportunity to kind of help, kind of see where we might could assist your county in, you know, wherever you could see us having a need. And just, we wanted to share a couple of our preliminary observations. Very impressed with your staff. The finance team is experienced and very capable and they're working hard. And it's nice to see that they're very close to finishing the audit and getting that back in a current standing. There's a challenge with some outdated financial software, which they're also looking at improving, but that's a heavy lift to implement new software. And it looks like there may be a need for creating some additional capacity. It seems like over the past couple of years, there have been more and more things that are coming down, more requirements. And it's really, we're finding that in a lot of places these days. It's very much a challenge for finance departments to keep up with all the responsibilities that they have. We've had, spent some time with Lisa, kind of seeing how we could possibly assist her and looking at how we could maybe give them some ideas on how to manage the daily operations better to take some of the load off the current staff. Your HR team, you just lost a very experienced HR director to retirement. Good for Gail. You've got, fortunately, you were able to do some overhire to bring in somebody who was able to fill that director role. But that's a big loss of institutional knowledge with Gail leaving. And there's been a lot going on with a new payroll system, which I understand the first test will be at the end of the month with the new payroll. But I think it seems like that's been going well, but that's a huge undertaking as well to keep that going while you're keeping the day-to-day operations going. So after having these meetings and some initial discussions, we wanted to just identify some areas where we thought the association could potentially provide some assistance. One is in the strategic planning area facilitation. We've had discussions with Amber and as mentioned, that, that is something that the board is interested in pursuing. We could potentially offer assistance there. We're here to provide ongoing resources. We say we're only a phone call away. So if there are other issues that you're tackling that you need some experience with, we are there to do that. We could also offer, we know that Amber is still in the interim role. And if there's interest in the association possibly assisting with county manager recruitment, we, that is, that is a service that the association provides. We, we've discussed with Lisa, looking at doing some staffing analysis to see if we can help kind of identify where, where, where's the sweet spot of where they might could use some additional capacity and how we might address some of that to take some of the workload off the current team. And then we're also able to assist with policy and procedure development in areas of HR, finance, those basic fundamental policies that are needed for a county government. One of the benefits of partnering with the association is we bring a lot of experience. I think between mine and Amy, there's probably not a department we haven't had responsibility for and have pretty much seen it all in our respective thirty years. But maybe the most attractive thing is that there's no cost for any of these services. These services are, are provided as part of your membership dues in the association. So all of the work of strategic member services is provided at no cost. So all of the work of strategic member services is provided at no cost to the counties. And I think more importantly, with Amy and I both having been former county employees, we have, both of us counties are very close to our heart. And we're committed to the success of all 100 counties in the state and love the opportunity to work more closely with counties where we can bring our expertise and knowledge and help. I did just want to make the introduction, let you know the association is here to assist the board or the staff. And so at this point, I'll take any questions.
I don't have a question. I just want to say that I have found y'all's association very beneficial. This is my eighth year. I can remember when I came on in 2016, the first place I went was Durham. It was in Durham that year. Been to Wilmington, different places all over the state. Have a lot of good breakout sessions, especially some that were in my, I've been to five of your annual meetings in my eight years. And I would just say that I think Sonya went with me on one. My first one was way back with Jimmy Walker. If you remember Jimmy, he and I went down to Durham, had a very good one there. But what I like is, is you have almost at every meeting I've been to, you've got someone there that if a county has a particular question, you've got someone on hand at that meeting that can answer it. And also it helps counties coordinate together. You get ideas from other counties, especially when you're at breakfast or something, just sitting around with a guy, maybe a guy or lady from, say, Yadkin, Surrey, or it could be all the way down to Anzlo. You hand over and you can talk and pick up things from other counties. So just want to say thank you for that opportunity. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody else got any comments or questions?
Thank you for coming. I like the way you pronounce Francisco, the way the folks that live there do.
And we know, and I, Codell Shelton, yeah.
I can tell you've really been there when you say Francisco. The, we're looking at doing a strategic planning, kind of a big effort there compared to almost no formal strategic planning efforts in the past. And establishing a valid strategic plan that we can execute. And so you guys helped with that. I think we're going to probably want to get your assistance. We're going to actually, I think, do an off-site to try to do that, which we've got to discuss here shortly. But we do want to come up with a strategic plan. What's your thoughts on hiring a contractor to do strategic planning for you versus just trying to do it yourself and maybe with the facilitation of you guys?
I think it would depend on really what you're trying to achieve. I think having facilitation is important. So I would suggest having someone from outside. But Amy's got a deep experience in that, as do I. So we come, we're free.
Yeah. And those matter.
Yeah, Amy said today at lunch, you get what you pay for. And I'm like, whoa, we're free, but we're not cheap in what we bring. But I think it is important somebody who's got that experience, who can show you the path from just starting out with your goals. But almost more importantly is then, once you have them, how do you work through them? And that's some information that I shared with Amber today, because that's my strength, is once you have a goal, how do you move the needle from where you are to where you're going to go? So I think certainly I would encourage you to have a facilitator, whether it's the association or someone else that you might feel comfortable with.
I think we would do the association. Okay, good. I think, well, I think that's encouraging. We've got a lot of major issues to solve that need to be encapsulated into a strategic plan so that we stay focused and get them solved, so.
And I think that's the big part is getting all the issues out, getting them down on paper, assigning responsibility and then starting to work on the plans, but also prioritizing. I think that's the, some of the biggest challenges when you try and have a strategic plan initially. You want to get everything moving, but that's difficult to do. So really, I think we would, as part of the process, we would encourage trying to get some consensus on what kind of the major priorities are, so that that's where staff knows where they need to focus their energy. So that you have some things that might move slower than others, but you've got to get some things really moving.
Okay, good. What's the schedule, what's your guys' scheduling like for getting lead time to get you in?
I think we would want to certainly have a conversation with chair and vice chair and kind of get a sense for expectations, but we can move pretty quickly. We've got a lot of templates and ideas already in place that we've used with other counties, but we would want to make sure that we tailor this to Stokes County's needs.
How long would, how many days would it take to do it? One day or more than one day?
I would start out with just maybe one, but one thing we had suggested to Amber is kind of use that to get the guts of the strategic plan done, that we could then come back and play and make sure the board's okay, that we've heard everything that you wanted. But then maybe in that March timeframe, come back and have kind of a budget work session, looking at it in conjunction with the strategic planning. And so, so in essence, I would say two days, but with some time span in between.
Okay, great.
Because I think that's really how you can, when you really start moving some things forward, it's, are there resources that are needed to move some of these initiatives forward? And I think having, identifying what some of those would be early and then giving staff some time to come back and let you know maybe what's currently being done in those areas. How can it be bolstered? So, you know, the more important thing is making sure we know where we are and everybody agrees on where you want to get to. And then let's talk about the strategies of how we can accomplish that. Immediate term, short term and longer term.
Yeah, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
I appreciate your presentation. It's very good. I know you've probably been here all day, so appreciate you sticking around for our meeting. And I think that your expertise would be welcomed. The years that you've spent involved in government, county government would be valuable, I think, to us in a retreat situation to facilitate a retreat with us. So I'm just looking forward to working with you guys.
Thank you.
Well done. I welcome you.
Thank you. Well, and I will say, that's the one thing about having the association facilitate rather than someone who might not know county government. You know, government is a different animal. And it helps with us having such a deep knowledge that might help move some things along faster when you're more familiar with the subject matter.
Amy and I kind of Cannon there, we kind of went parallel. You know, I was with City of Fayetteville and she was in Cumberland County. She went through the ranks all the way up to the actual county manager before she retired. And then I went up through the ranks to Assistant Chief of Police when I retired. But it's, it was always, we had different interests. Sometimes, got a little bit what you heard earlier. Sometimes, you know, people don't understand, but one thing that I always liked about Amy was just, you know, she's, she could have that level head at times to bring back to really what the, you know, the problem is. Obviously, there's different interests, but at the same time, it's the same community. It's kind of what we're going through here in Stokes County, just very smaller. But I think our strategic planning, when we get that going, and I also think that as we start getting a better understanding of, you know, where this county, you know, wants to go in terms of growing and what we kind of, kind of what we want to be. I think that'll, that'll kind of open some eyes. And I think we'll all be able to, not all of us, of course, because there's never everybody, but the majority of people, I think, will move forward.
And I really hate you didn't get to meet Amy tonight. She's fabulous. She and I have just gotten to know each other through this work and we're like each other's favorite person. So she's really great at what she does.
What I'd like to do is, because I know back in the day, Amy was involved in some of the school funding issues. And I would like to know, do y'all provide a surface service to the county to where maybe we could get some feedback on some of the challenges that we seem to have regarding the budgeting, the local money that goes into the schools?
Well, I can't speak for Amy, but I'm pretty much an expert on school budgeting. In Wake County, we had $2 billion of school debt. They got 50% of our tax rate. And I actually started out my career on the school side. So I have a lot of experience on school funding, both operating and capital.
We need to talk. Need to talk.
When were you, how long you been with the association?
I've been with the association just a little over a year.
All right, I'm familiar with the Wake school system. Matter of fact, we're furnishing several jobs now in the country. Thank God, this is my last year selling rebar. I'm familiar with some of your jobs when you were there with the school system.
Yeah, I left Wake in 2021. So I had a lot of years of school system challenges.
Well, thank you for.
Challenge down there.
That's a good word to use, challenge.
I was trying to find the right one. But, you know, we really look forward to the opportunity to work with y'all and to continue to work with Amber and her staff, because that's what we're here to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Next up is the sales tax update from our finance director, Lisa.
Well, actually, I used this template that we've had for quite some time. And Ms. Sharp has kind of given me more information as far as sales tax. And I don't want to steer any of you wrong. She's going to help me with a new template that also includes refunds, like the nonprofits, that this does not. So if I could come back with the correct.
Sure, yeah. I mean, does anybody else good with that or do you want to hear?
No, I'm good.
Or do you want to hear something now or?
What's the bottom line of this one, White?
This does not include the refunds. It is not that drastic.
Right. It's not as drastic as it looks.
Correct.
Okay, good, that's good news.
And I can redo it with what Ms. Sharp has helped me with.
Then just bring it back.
Okay.
Wish we could, I wish it wasn't always two months behind, but I guess there's no way to avoid that.
It's always 60 days. Am I correct?
Actually, 90 days behind.
Yes.
November, December, yeah, pretty much.
All right, so we'll go to discussion agenda now. And first up is Stokes County Public Health Plan. And Chad, Chad's here.
So with me is Director Martin. Really quick, I know there was some discussion earlier about Dale Nix. I had worked with his dad and uncle in Guilford County a number of years ago, Eddie and Skip, Chief Nix. And I don't know if you were aware of it, the Towers to Tunnel Foundation paid their mortgage today. So Kelly does not have to worry about that as his widow, which is also a great blessing. Beyond that, we've presented.
Did that today?
That was brought out in the news today, but they made arrangements to take care of their mortgage. So that's, they did that and another deputy in Georgia that was killed while in duty. So we have talked about this quite a bit. I'm not sure, I'm just going to open it up for you guys as the commissioners to ask us what you would like to know tonight, past the information that we've already provided. And then we can probably get from there to keep your night to a minimum.
Yeah, I mainly, and I appreciate y'all coming back. Because I mainly wanted to make sure that Commissioner Cox was here in person and also had time to digest, you know, everything, because this is an important decision. And I just, I just want to make sure that we're all good before we go any further. So if somebody wants to start?
Well, actually, I would prefer Commissioner Cox. She's on the board. I'd like for her to.
I had a couple of questions in regards to the plan. And one, I think it's going to take some digging into this question. And I think Amber's, I talked to her today about getting some feedback from the technical assistance team from the association in regards to this mental health caseworker position that's listed in this plan. But, and I say that because when we met jointly with Rockingham County, there was some discussion about how much you could use the money for to anything in the mental health realm. And so I just want to be sure that that is an approved use of those funds, a mental health caseworker versus an LCAS, which is an addiction specialist, which I think is covered, but I'm not sure the mental health caseworker is covered. And we're going to check into that.
I can probably split that out for you in two parts and then let Director Martin also answer. So the reason for an LCSW rather than an LCAS and all of these acronyms, which one is strictly for addiction specialist, as you know, and the other one is for a licensed clinical social worker, which is more of the mental health side. Just like we do with Dr. Cassidy Vu, she does MAT. A lot of that component falls under opioid settlement funding. But she is also our medical director. She also is our adult clinician, one of two, in our public health services in our clinic that we see adult patients. Our adult patient numbers are sky high, which is a good thing. Because with a clinical addiction or a clinical social worker, we can bill mental health funds. So if somebody shows up, we're not going to tie up an LCSW in the first year, full-time, 40 hours a week, seeing patients who have substance use disorders. That's reality. But if this person is also seeing kind of split billing or split services or split time, how much of this is applied to this, how much is applied to that? And that's something that public health is already doing and is very good at over the years with the different budgets. That person can also see other patients and provide for mental health services in the county and see our patients who are being supported under MAT, if that helps. So it would take, and I'll let Director Martin speak more about that budgeting part if you like, so we can clear this up.
Yeah, I mean, I understand the difference in the billing aspect of it. And I understand why the caseworker is more beneficial for the health department. My question is solely, can opioid money be used to pay that salary of that position? And that's something I think Amber's going to have to do some more checking into. Because it is more mental health and not opioid related in nature. And that's what Rockingham County was running into. That's what, why I even mentioned it, because they were saying to us in our meeting, they had to partner with the hospital there to find other ways to pay that type of position for mental health.
No, and that is a good point to bring up, because that is a problem they ran into. They thought opioid, here's a pot of money, it's free for all, but there's caveats. And I mean detailed caveats of where those go. And I mean detailed caveats of where those go. So Commissioner Cox is spot on with this component. But just like we came as a board of health and as a public health director, um, Director Martin, came to this board last year for the use of the grant money to pay Dr. Vu and give us a chance to get up to the speed. And now Dr. Vu is essentially very much self-sustaining. The LCSW, because, and I'll, she'll speak a little bit more on the, um, on the law enforcement from the incarceration side, there's going to be a lot of work in, in the jail specifically for a clinical social worker specifically related to opioid settlement money use. Okay?
I don't think Dr. Vu's paid out of, uh, grant money though.
Partially was.
She could, yeah, out of pocket from the state.
Right, right, right. Not the opioid money. All these pots of money gets real confusing. Go ahead, F you had a, something to add to that.
Just on the jail part?
Sure.
They will, uh, start, assign the new jail health plan the end of December. They will start doing Suboxone or whatever they come in. If they're on something to try to get off of the opioids, they will continue the care. It will be three months before they start induction of care on those that have been on drugs and want to get off, but they haven't tried to get off yet. So in three months from now, they should start doing induction of Suboxone, giving them a chance. And with speaking to them, we're trying to see if we can add into the opioid somehow, a person that can be at the jail part-time to help the people when they get out with a plan and maybe make it part of their parole conditions that as soon as they get out, they have to have an appointment made with us and they have to follow up and show that they are following up.
Right. That, that, the coordinator position, as well as the peer support specialist that we've already approved hiring will be instrumental in that and the reentry, um, from the jail, um, as she's talking about. Uh, there's a NC Rise program that is, um, something that Stokes is part of now. And it's a step-by-step process where they, it shows them online exactly what all they can do, um, what, what all steps they can take when they get out for reentry and how to be successful with their, uh, recovery. So, so I think that's, that's a good thing that we haven't had, that we're going to be implementing in the jail, uh, coming up. But no, I think the, the main reason I think that y'all held this over, um, so I could be here and discuss it in person, which I appreciate, you know, was talking about that opioid coordinator position and where to place it. Oh, I think we've already got the applications in and, um, we've closed that process and it's, you know, time, of course, to start interviewing. And before that happens, I think the question is where to, to place it. And, um, as you know, I have been in favor of, um, it being a standalone department just because of, um, a lot of input that I received from the committee that, that I'm on, the, the Substance Use and Treatment Committee. And, and their thoughts, I think, was to have something that mirrored what, the, the good parts of what Surry County has done. Obviously, they went through some growing pains and, um, have, um, and, and it's, there's been some change in how they, they do things up there. But, but I think we can all learn from things that they did early on that they might've done differently. I just don't want to see this person, I guess my fear is, um, in putting it in one department, and I'm not saying, I'm not picking on health department because I serve on the Board of Health. So I'm obviously, uh, you know, a big fan of the, of the Board of Health as well. But, um, I just don't want to silo this person in, you know, and, and feel like that these other departments don't have equitable access at all times to this position. That touches so many other positions that it works with jail, with reentry, with justice involved, transportation, the families of those who are in active substance use disorder, uh, recovery services, our faith-based community. Um, it just touches so many other departments and services with the community paramedics, the bridge program. I don't want to see what happened to the position that went into DSS that became solely used by DSS to happen to this. And I think it could take a concerted effort for that not to happen, um, on our part and, and with Tammy's help and, and Chad, of course, um, that, that that won't be the case because of, of the, the amount of people who are going to depend on this one person and, and how it's going to affect whether this is successful or not down the road and is sustainable for 17 years. Because that's another thing you got to look at is if, you got to get this right person so that 17 years from now, when this money runs out, there's other grants, there's other things that we've tapped into that can sustain it over the long haul. And that's just my thing. And, and it may be, uh, you got to house it somewhere. I get it. It's got to get a start and a good foothold. And, and it's something, you know, that can be tweaked down the road if, if we're seeing we don't, um, like the results and think we could get better results to do it differently. So that being said, you know, I'm fine with whatever the majority of the board wants to, to do. I just, I think more importantly than where the position is, is who this person is. That is whether it's going to be successful or not. So, and that's my, you know, my big thing. So I don't really, I'm not going to throw up a big fuss or, or anything about where it goes. I mean, it's got to go somewhere and sooner the better. So.
Commissioner Cox, you don't have to, and by no means throw up a big fuss. You, you bring up a good point of a position that had been created long ago. Um, in a time, I mean, we all have to accept that our county is growing, our mindset is changing. Um, the, the board that's been appointed and the longevity, by the way we've broken it over time so that there's not this just one big exodus of people, um, I think helps, lends some credibility to its long-term sustaining and open access to every department. And, uh, then the work that, uh, and this is truly on Tammy to, to get into the jail. Um, that has been a, a goal for a while, and that is a huge, huge barrier that almost every other county is still running up against.
That's true.
So Sheriff Flemings has been really, really pretty open about getting this done. And almost every other county I talked to, they're still having issues with that.
That's true.
I come here because as chairman, I represent the Board of Public Health collectively. And what's been stated to me several times over is they feel it's a public health issue. By General Statute 138, 1-1, it falls under that great 153-page document in the legislature. And it is, it's a public health issue. And that's why they felt like it should be placed into that realm with a group of scientists because we have benchmarks that we have to meet. We have to meet. We have to show a 20% reduction as from the state. So again, this is all in your purview. This is up to the commissioners. I, as chairman of that board, Director Martin, we're not going to go away because of whatever decision you make. This is not about the sandbox or the marbles. So that's all I have unless you have anything else, questions?
Mr. Chairman, sure. Go ahead. Knowing that we will make a decision whether to stand alone or in the health department, certainly I'm sure we'll be able to do. I always like to look at, I looked at your PowerPoint presentation a couple of times, and you've got, uh, PowerPoint where it says opportunities and challenges. That's what I always like to look at, one of the challenges. And reading off of this, known limitations and challenges with Plan A, housing opportunities was a top one. Stokes County has limited housing options and coordinates will be required as options outside of the county. Future opportunities for housing or early development. Can you address that one first for me?
I, I can a little bit because Insight Human Services has limited housing capability. There are certain number, certain number of beds available to Stokes County residents. They are in listed Salem. They are an apartment-type culture. Um, Derek has spoken to this before. So it's an available option. It's just having a coordinator who has the time, who has built the relationships. And it comes, Commissioner Cox is spot on. It's going to be about the right person. You know, we could hire somebody from Disney, but if they don't understand the relationships and how to, how to take and, um, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to make you. She's got the vapors on.
I'm in the candy, I'm in the candy bowl, I'm here.
Commissioner, I will ask you more questions if you will do that.
It's all good. It's all good.
Talking.
Opportunities with other structures as we move along with school buildings in the future. Those buildings, those walls, those walls, it doesn't mean that there are grant opportunities available for some transitional housing. There's also other transitional housing already in place through other nonprofits and other faith-based organizations. So there are challenges, yes. Because the biggest thing is if you are somebody who is used to seeing everybody that you normally see in public, that you bought your stuff from, that you sat and got high with, you can't be around them. You've got to leave. So switching people between here and Wilmington even, it's a big, big facility there. Guilford County is getting ready to finish up theirs on the east side of Greensboro off of, um, Miras Chapel. So there's opportunities, but that takes a coordinator. That is not my full-time gig.
Okay. And the other one you, I think, has been addressed, but, you know, it's this coordinator having knowledge to assess the needs of the population and collaborate with a network of support across those county departments and organizations. I guess one of my first questions is, is, uh, County Manager Brown, you've closed applications.
Yes.
And you, uh, is it a problem? Tell me how many people applied for that position?
I believe it ended up being six. Is that right, Jamie? Six applications?
Six for that position.
Impressive.
Did you have, did you have, can I quickly just ask, what were some of the qualifications you put in the job description?
Public health background, experience with, with opioid, substance abuse, mental health. Uh, I believe it was a bachelor's. Was it, Jamie, do you remember if it was required or preferred? I can't remember off the top of my head, but I think it did say bachelor's prefer, preferential masters. Um, the tip, the typical accolades, you would assume that would come with.
To make sure that-
Yes. Yeah. Someone who has experience in the field is evident.
And the field experience and then have a bachelor's or a master's.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Morris?
The, um, we all campaigned on this as one of our top issues, and I feel really comfortable with the way it's being approached here. The, I haven't seen this much energy and money either around this issue the whole time I've been in local government. And I think you guys are, are getting the right people in place and all, you know, the board and everything to do this. And I'm encouraged by the fact we're going to have to measure the results and, uh, and report that back. So, you know, I'm good with it. I'm finally been in the health department to, to at least to start with, check it there and see. Creating another department is, as you immediately branded, is expanding government. So.
Yes, sir.
But I, I think it stands a decent chance of, if you get the right person, like you guys are recommending here. I, I agree with Sonia 1,000%. If you don't have the right person, I don't care where it is. Uh, but from day one, the common sense factor kicked in. I think it would be under the health department. That's it.
Went over this over and over and over. I mean, I, I believe it. We need to start it in, in the health department. Guys have the, the metrics, you know, already, already in place basically to, to deal with a lot of this stuff. And it's like what Commissioner Morris says, you know, there's accountability to everything. There'll be evaluations. And if it's not going to work, we'll move it. I mean, it's just as simple as that.
We could grow, you know, over time.
Yeah.
It could, and I don't look at that as growing government. I've looked at it as expertise in a field where it needs that expertise. Uh, and, and the more grant money that could come along and, and the more peer support specialists you could get, it could, and transportation, um, things. You look at what other counties have been able to do. I mean, it, it could grow into a standalone department eventually. But, but it's got to start somewhere.
You're, you're very correct. It very well could become that large. Hopefully, we start knocking this down. I, I can tell you that the opioid responses in general in the county, from what I've been told, now I haven't seen the actual paper, but what I've been told from department heads is starting to tie down a little bit, which is a good sign.
Yeah, there's other things that are coming along unfortunately.
Yeah.
It's taking the place of opioids. As you're not seeing the overdose rates, but it's just as deadly and has other health problems tied to meth and fentanyl and everything else that's, you know, well, the fentanyl is tied to overdose, of course, but.
Or new stuff that absolutely doesn't respond to Narcan at all.
Exactly. Exactly. So.
But the biggest thing is as it grows, the opportunities for grants for transportation and housing are the two biggest things. I see opportunities for that coordinator up front. So.
Right. So, so all I got.
I've got one quick question. How many hands are going to be on this to interview this individual?
That's out of my, that's way out of my, I'm, I'm over here on the-
It depends what department we put it in. It's us.
Per committee?
I mean, if it's under the health department, then they would have to go through your-
I don't think it's going to be the committee, but I do feel like, in my opinion, that you should have like, because it touches these departments with Brandon's entry.
Yes, a lot of interviews should be done and.
Dr. Nelson, Tammy.
I would consider bringing the administrative for, for, um, council. County Commissioners Association.
The OHS now.
It's too many. Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, as long as I think you've got a lot of those bases covered, uh, with, um, different areas, since it touches so many areas.
But if you bring their technical assistant back, it's one of those.
Right.
Because they've already been down that road.
Yeah, that wouldn't be a bad idea. One of those.
Don't we need the middle one is quick? I mean, the-
Yeah, I, I think we should move it back to action to, um, if we need to take action to where, of where to place it. Or do we just need a consensus? So.
Unless, if you feel comfortable doing consensus, but it may be good just to have it on record to do a vote.
Are we doing the health plan? Is that what we're approving or what are we proving?
We've got to approve that. That's got to be approved, even though we, we've all said we could go that way. That actually needs to be-
We've already approved the hiring and we've already approved the-
Yeah.
All the things when we approved what, um, so.
I wasn't referring to the hiring of, I was talking about, we need to put it on action tonight. I think that we are wanting to put it in the health.
That's fine.
I think that's got to be.
I, I agree. Just because you are establishing a new position.
That's exactly right.
So, I mean, and the job description, while we did approve it, it says TBD still. So it doesn't, it doesn't say.
Then I think Jamie and you need to come up with, uh, as he said, as Chad said, I think we've got to have, it would be great to have one person out of the County Commissioners Association and maybe an EMS and may, maybe like five people on the interview team. That's usually the way we did it when I-
Be good. Cover the bases, I think.
Chairman Chandler, I'm going back to my corner now.
Good. Thank you, Chad.
Thank you. So we got a consensus to move to action tonight? Make that happen, Amber. Remind us, remind me. All right. Next is, uh, performance evaluation. And, um, I'm just going to, I'll make it very, very brief. But so with the performance evaluations, we've got to, we got to understand where we've kind of, where, where we're starting and, and where we're going to end. Um, we're already into, we're already into January. And typically the performance evaluations, when they're completed, they would be completed in time, especially if we do merit pay, would, would have to be completed in time to where we would have an opportunity in the next year's budget, as we're formulating the budget, to determine what that merit pay would be. And my understanding- And my understanding, Amber, is nobody has been given any kind of, of a support form or what their expectation level is.
Well, we've, we've started that process. I've, I mean, we've started training the department heads, and I've went over some of them with them, but I'm, I've gotten some of them. You know, I mean, I haven't finished the department heads. I've been going through that process of sitting down with them and establishing that support form, because my hope is that once we, once I sit down with the department heads and make sure they understand what the support form is and training, train them on the process very thoroughly, at that point, they can turn around and train their employees. I mean, so I'm hoping that I can finish that up by, I mean, finish meeting with them in the next couple of weeks, is my hope. That way, like I said, they can turn around and train their employees at that point.
Well, I think that, and correct me, I mean, obviously, I don't want everyone's opinion, but it's, we're not, that, that's, you're not gonna be able to, to do everything in, in time for our new budget that's coming up.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm thinking that, you know, so the merit pay definitely is not gonna be on the table for this budget year, so let's get it right and get everybody, because you also, it's not fair to the employees if you're not, if you're not telling them their expectations. And then you're able to show the expectations, or whether they, they've exceeded or whether they didn't. So I think that my recommendation would be, we, we get it right. This is the, this is the time that we need to get everybody trained up on it, and then the, the supervisors and the managers need to sit down with the employees and go over the expectations. So it'd be, it'd be a fair, fairer process. And, and it's not a, a rush job.
Absolutely.
I agree.
I think you're 100% correct. There's no use to rush that, try and get it into this one.
I don't think there's no way to do it quick.
Well, and, and to make sure that it's performed accurately.
Well, before you do a performance evaluation too, letting them actually act on meeting their objectives too, because I mean, even if you rush to do it, they're still not gonna have time to accurately be able to work to meet those objectives, what's listed on the support form too. So I think that'll be good to give it some time, to let them soak it in.
Any, any comments, questions, Mr. Cox?
No, that sounds good to me.
Can I just get a consensus?
Get it right.
A consensus to, you know, that, just you'll, you'll make that happen?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Any, any comment, a question or two? One of the things we have to do is figure out where the money's coming from to pay merit pay. I mean, there's some policy stuff that's gotta be figured out.
Well, this will give us.
And so, at some point, so what we're saying is in the 2025 budget, we will have a merit pay pool, if that's established at that time.
Well, I think that's one of the subjects we can address with Carter when they, when they get in front of us.
Exactly. When our financial advisors show up.
Yeah, I've seen it done, for example, which is probably not what we wanna do, but where you take the current payroll and you rip off a piece of it and put it in merit, so then it comes away from some people and goes to other people without having to increase the overall budget. That probably wouldn't be popular, but I mean, if you don't have the money, that's, that's one way you can do it.
We didn't hear that.
Well, we gotta take a percentage off the top and make that merit. But otherwise, you gotta, you gotta come up with it somewhere else. You know, there's a reason for doing it that way.
Well, I know, I know, I know.
So we gotta figure, we gotta have some policy that addresses how we're gonna put the money in the merit pay pool every year.
I will say, Lisa and I have a, ten of meetings scheduled with Doug and Andrew Carter on the 16th, so we do have that set for an official in-person meeting where they're gonna come here and we'll sit down with them and go over some things. So I'll have more to update, I'm sure, after that meeting.
Any other discussion? All right, next, what kinda goes hand in hand is, I just wanna make sure that, that we're, we're watching the ball about the compression pay and pay study. It can't be, it, we've, we've got to do, we've, we've gotta do a better job with, with the pay study. The, the pay study has, has way too many flaws in it, and, and compression pay, again, each, each year that it goes by, the compression pay gets worse and worse. We gotta come up with some type of a plan. It can't be a, we can't take a bunch of money and fix it at once, but we've gotta start, we've gotta start looking at this. If we can't keep good employees, I don't, you know, it's, we're, it's, the county will be in, even, is gonna be in bad shape. And what I would like to, to propose is for Amber and, and Jamie, our HR director, to engage with the, with the County Commissioners Association and see if they, if they also do pay studies, pay classifications, if there's any kind of room that, that they can give us.
DRC does them.
DRC does them. Okay, okay.
I'm sure it's.
You wanna come up, Jamie?
Good evening, y'all. So Amber and I had met with Amy and Jonna from the N C A C C a month or so ago, because this is one of our major concerns, and it is a huge priority for my department this year as far as looking at our, our salary study and our salary computation plan, because as of right now, we don't technically have one. The salary study that was done in 2021 was based off of numbers from, from years prior to that, so we're seeing now how we're four and five years behind in our salaries, you know, compared to the benchmark across the state. So we did bring that up to Jonna and Amy a couple of months ago, and they said that they'd be more than happy to help us look at our salary stu, if we wanted to do another salary study, so I'm urging y'all to please this budget year to consider doing that for our employees, to help us gain and retain employees and not have to keep fighting with surrounding counties to keep them. We, like I said, we want to remain competitive, we wanted to help with our retention efforts, and when we did speak with Amy and Jonna, they did mention, because my question was, how often do you look at your salaries for your employees? And Jonna brought up a good point. She said it's good to look at them every year, but a lot of times, counties can't afford to fix one problem all at one time, like, like we did, just one big salary study and fix everything. So if we could set up a goal or a plan to look at these few departments this year, these three departments next year, you know, so that way everybody's looked at on a continual basis and not five years, 10 years down the road, we're trying to fix everybody's salary. So she did say that. Another thing, like we're figuring out with a lot of our jobs now, is the market value on jobs change. So in 2000 or 1995, IT professionals were not as popular as they are now and not as needed as they are now. You didn't have iPhones and smartboards, and everybody has their own laptops, so, I mean, these are all things that you have to take into consideration when you're looking at the changing times.
Any questions, comments, or?
I agree, we need to update, do whatever we can to retain good employees. I get it, it's, it's tough.
It's hard, and we have a lot of employees. I was looking today at the numbers of our active employees compared to 2015, where we had like 280 active employees, and now we've got 450 some that we're trying to keep here, and we're fighting with everybody around us to keep them, so.
That includes part-time, right?
Uh, part-time's about 538.
Woo, talk about growing government.
Yeah. It's a lot. And we're really figuring that out now that we're implementing a new, a new timekeeping system and payroll system, so.
And we don't wanna get in a situation, I don't know if any of the commissioners saw it, uh, it, it didn't directly relate to government, but it does in a way, I can't remember, and so therefore, uh, my Stokes News partner, don't quote me on this.
Don't say it.
One of the counties close to us, east of us, can't remember, and I, and so I'm not gonna pin them down, but it was either Guilford or Alavaz. It related to their school system. The bus drivers went on strike.
That's all that is, elements.
It was, it was one of those two. I don't, I don't wanna be quoting which one.
The lunchroom, you're right.
But what happened was, is they didn't have, they couldn't find anybody to drive the buses. They were bringing people out of classrooms to drive buses, and it was all due to their salaries. And so that affects not only the government system, but, you know, a lot of the entities that go within the government.
Right, I mean, when you think about public safety and journey, y'all were talking about police and Sheriff's Department earlier, and had y'all not went back and approved to move our deputies up to pay grades, they would be starting out at $34,000 a year. And look what they face every day. And our neighboring counties are, all of them are paying well over 40, starting out.
It's not gonna get any better. Just, just today, the Winston Salem Journal, since we're dropping you every time. North Carolina was number two in the nation in growing, growth.
Mm-hmm, I saw that.
Uh, Texas was number one, who wanted, for the people who wants to know who's number one, and as far as it went, I don't see it changing. Uh, another figure I heard today, um, from my boss, whose wife's a real estate agent in Charlotte, there's 100 people moving into Charlotte per day, and they don't see the housing shortage or anywhere else to live down there improving anytime soon. So North Carolina's got it going on, though I thought, though I do think it's getting ready to slow down a little bit, but I don't think it's gonna be noticeable. So we need to be prepared.
Thing on the pay studies, the, uh, town, town, currently, we used to do one-third of their workforce per year, every year. I mean, they do a third every year. I think that's a way of keeping it from hitting all at one time.
Right, it keeps it more affordable.
Might check and see if they're still doing that, how they do it.
Any other comments, discussion? Can we, um, can we get a consensus at least to give the manager and our HR director some official direction to start looking into compression and to a salary compensation Yep. Yes?
Okay. In your free time?
E T R C does those studies too, those studies.
Anything else, Jamie?
Uh, nope, not on that topic.
Okay, all right. Next up is strategic planning. This'll be real quick, because we've, we've pretty much just, we talked about it with the County Commissioner Association. I just think it's, it's very important that, that we make a, we make a valid effort to get a good strategic plan, and I think that, you know, I, I, I wanna reach out to the school system to make sure that they're a part of it, because we do, we need all parts of the county involved in this, so we can get, we can get a good plan, and we can hopefully, you know, start going in steps and accomplishing some great things for the whole county. So if, possibly in our next meeting, if y'all could maybe bring your calendars, we can maybe set up a date of work session for strategic planning. Maybe, I don't know, just bring your calendars so we can.
About the one with the N C, W C A C C?
Right, yeah, yeah.
First day of it.
Right, yeah.
I got my calendar right here.
But we'll change.
Not if I mark it out right now. Uh, I think we're the only people that are still employed, right?
Unflexible.
So.
And he better help us keep the planning, 'cause I got a seven-hour Zoom meeting Wednesday with the U N C.
All right, of course, it's gonna depend on the ladies that were here, schedule. And are you talking about, and trying to do this in February for a full day?
I think so.
Yeah. Um, yeah. Well, we need to, like, I don't have very many days in our book except like this last week of, like, February 19th through the 23rd, 4th, that week, I, I'm open right now.
February 19th?
That's a Monday, yeah. Tuesday, yeah, that week is pretty open right now. We don't have a board meeting that week, um, so, I mean, we wanted to tentatively get Amber to check with them for dates that week, that they might could do, that would be, that would be good, 'cause, um.
Amber's gotta check for every day, because I've gotta fill in that, I've got a Prisactech planning meeting one day that week, and I don't know what it is, because I didn't bring, I don't have it on my.
Yeah, we won't put it in stone.
I don't think you wanna do Valentine's Day, or do you? Good.
No, we don't need to do Valentine's.
The 15th, I could, I mean, I can move people if I know this far.
Setting you up, right?
We don't wanna do Fridays, do we? I wouldn't think they would wanna, I, I don't need to be here on a Friday.
That's why I get my massage.
You're, you're starting to narrow it down, and, 'cause our meeting's at Prisactech on Tuesday and Thursday, so I can't, I can let you know tomorrow.
Trump Prisactech, if they re-Trump them.
I can call Dutch Briggs more and see when the February meeting is, and I can let you know tomorrow.
We just, how, how about we all check our calendars, and then, but you can start.
Yeah.
On that, on that week.
Well, when Jonna said, she left, she said we'd, we'd be in touch soon, so I'll call, I'll call them tomorrow to see what, what the soonest thing we can get set up is, or what that looks like, yeah.
So now we go to our action agenda. First up is the County Manager Job Description. Did everyone get an opportunity to, to reread it and, and?
I'll make a mention, we approved the County Manager's Job Description.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, next up is the Walnut Cove Senior Senator Advisory Council. Vicky Haines was nominated to the council at the last Commissioners' Meeting. No further applications have been received. We just need to do a poll.
So we closed applications?
Yes.
Okay, so it starts with me then, Haines?
Haines.
Yep, Vicky Haines.
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 Haines. Passes unanimously. Next up is the J C P C Appointment Request. That is Selena Howlett was nominated to the J C P C at the last meeting. No further applications have been received, and so we'll take a poll.
Howlett?
What is it?
Howlett.
Yep.
Howlett.
Howlett.
Howlett, all right.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you. And then the, uh, the Stokes County Opioid Coordinator, putting it in the Health Department.
I can mention that we put it in the Health Department, the opioid coordinator.
I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any further discussion?
If you allow me to, two minutes. I'm so sorry for coming late. I'm from, I'm representing the hospitality here. I'm, I'm, we are from the, uh, Basing Key, there is only one hospitality. I'm sorry for being late in the program.
Can I get a consensus to give me four minutes?
He's patiently sat here, please let him talk.
Okay, come on, you can come up.
Thank you, sir, thank you very much.
You missed the public hearing.
Good evening to all, and sorry for coming late here, sir. I'm representing the hospitality. It's located in King County, uh, Stock County, city of King. The address is 109 West Estreet King, sir. It's a 60-room hospitality, and I had took over the charge of this hospitality since June 16th, 2022. It's just completed one and a half year over there, sir, and we have upgraded the hospitality, and so many means, like, all the officers, most of the officers have visited and appreciated what we have did during last one and a half years, sir. Only, only having one hospitality over here, we do not have competition, but simultaneously, even the infrastructural development and all other things is lesser compared to the Western Salem area, we have lesser business. The tents, the recent trends of the business is showing that it's a downtrend, declining trend in case of hospitality business because of the household items price and fuel price is higher. People's tendency is now they are not coming more. People's tendency is now they are not coming more, much more towards the hospitality than stay with us for one or two days. Sir, if the six percent occupancy tax is added right now, that it will, total will be twelve point seventy-five percent with sales tax and occupancy tax, so total will become twelve point seventy-five percent, and it will come from the pocket of the guest. And now presently, guests are comparing the rates and pricing with all other county and all other hotels. On that day, we have attended meeting on Friday, Arts House, the Magellan Report, strategic report shows that in twenty twenty-three, there are twenty-eight county and forty-four town and cities still have three percent occupancy tax. So I highly recommend you, for our survival and hospitality survival, if you start with three percent occupancy tax and gradually increase with the year, that will be helpful for, for us and survival for our business, sir. I recommend you think over that point, because we are almost at the last, towards the end of North Carolina, we have afterwards, Mount Aris there, and there is two or three hotel. Here, there is only one hotel, but compared to other hotels, we have less construction business. I'm just repeating these things again, because presently, the occup, presently, the occupancy is ten to twelve percent, sir, and we have upgraded and invested money, we have started swimming pool too, and I have requested map, Torrey map, to come over there, and at least I would like to have a tour, at least I will take you to the tour. When we have taken charge, at that time, the health department even have visited, that at that time, the hotel could not get the seventy points, now it's eighty, ninety-seven points, sir, and we have just cleaned everything, painted everything, we have changed the door locks, we have changed platform, uh, platform bids, so like, we have kept everything, and it's perfectly fine, the reviews are wonderful, most of them, the Stock County persons are staying there, and they are paying money. When they come here and stay for one or two or three nights, they have to pay twelve point seventy-five percent tax, it's quite more. So my heartiest request to all of you, that if you start with three percent, will be highly appreciated, sir. Thank you very much, sir, for giving me time. Thank you.
And thank you for all you've done to update.
Thank you, actually, it's a Magellan report, ma'am, and Chris has presented to me, and I'm just, I'm just giving you the data, these are the datas, ma'am. So you can see this, and it shows that, see, it's a twenty-three North Carolina occupancy tax, and since, you know, county, twenty-eight county and forty-four cities have three percent occupancies. So if you, and there is one person too, and eight have two percent, but actually, I would like to see my county download, so you know?
Do you mind signing in?
Yes, ma'am, yes, and sorry for coming late.
No, just your name?
Yes, ma'am, yes.
If you don't mind, and your, where your...
Yes.
If you don't mind, just for a reference.
Yes.
Thank you.
And thank you, sir, for giving me time, I know your time is more valuable.
Yeah, close.
Thank you so much.
Thank y'all for waiting. Next, we've got a closed session, and our county manager, Amber Brown, will read the rationales for the closed session.
To consider the initial employment or appointment of an individual to any office or position other than a vacancy in the Board of County Commissioners, or of any other public body, or to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, and fitness of any public officer or employee, other than a member of the Board of Commissioners, or of some other public body pursuant to General Statute one four three, Act three one eight dot one one A six.
Get a motion to go into closed session?
So, a minute.
All in favor?
Aye.
Rehearsively. or to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character and fitness of any public officer or employee other than a member of the Board of Commissioners or of some other public body pursuant to General Statute one four three dash three one eight dot one one A six.
Get a motion to go into closed session. All in favor?
Aye.
Read your namens.